The Rodney Ford Education Meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 230 of the Public Laws of 1975, entitled the Open Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by identifying the retrospect as well as posted notices in the Borough Hall, Rodney Post Office, Mary Bulb School, Line Bingham School, Ray Scioning School, and the Rodney Public School District Website. Please rise in joining in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the one holy Christian state, one nation under God, in the good will of the Lord. Roll call, board members.
Ms. Dare.
Here.
Ms. Bebe.
Here.
Ms. Rockman.
Here.
Ms. Davidson.
Here.
Ms. Legel.
Here.
Ms. Murray.
Here.
Ms. Panzarella.
Here.
Ms. Sam.
Here.
Ms. Spalding.
Here.
Ms. McCormick.
Also present, Mark Haynucci, Superintendent; Sean McCann, Business Administrators; Supervisor for Curriculum Adjustment; Jay Deesey, Principal, Bingham Family School; Steve Peely, Principal, Bulb School; Phil Silva, Vice Principal, Bulb School; Todd Supper, Child Study Team Supervisor; and Frank Hines, Supervisor for Building and Grounds. At this time, I need a motion to approve the meeting from September 18th.
I make a motion to approve the meeting from September 18th.
Mr. David Burea.
Second.
Seconded by Patty. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Bebe.
Yes.
Ms. Rockman.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Legel.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sam.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding. Yes. Financial Department, a motion from Gary Jennings, September 2018. Ms. David Burea.
Second.
Seconded by Naomi. Roll call.
Ms. Dare.
Yes.
Ms. Bebe.
Yes.
Ms. Rockman.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Legel.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sam.
Yes.
All right, at this time, I'm going to ask everyone up here if we could please go to the back room. We have a sticky stress pack. As we're filing, because you don't have this in your hand, Ms. Lehard. She's our lead teacher. Great job. As a filing, because you don't have this in your hand, Ms. Lehard. She's our lead teacher. Thank you so much, parents and family members to come out tonight with your children. They look awesome, they're doing great job. As you know, we have a parent show coming up in a couple weeks. This is Ann Lehard does an awesome job, this is just a little preview, a little sneak peek at all the wonderful things she does, so if you can join us for the show as well, so thank you for coming. Feel free to say, go, whatever works for you, so we appreciate it. We're going to resume, so we can, I know you all text me about a very important addition to our staff this year, which will introduce folks with this. Good, very well, very helpful. Just very good meeting for the evacuation of all adults, also both sides of great important courses like that, knowing that you really remember. Hope to be kind of spearheading that along with Mr. Beal and Mr. Silva. Great addition, all three of them, kids love them, love Sam, love all of them, love you all. We have four of them all. Well done. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
We also have review of test scores, 17-18, is that you?
Yes. Okay, so last week, last week, last month, everyone received just a little summary rundown of the test score data as far as where we were. So if you look at her performance, the state requires that we report to the Board of Education each year on test scores, that's all test scores involved. So that includes our PAR data, our ELA data, which is dynamic learning apps, which is for certain members of our special education population, and also our access testing scores. One with that data being reviewed, we also have to break down by demographic groups. So I'm going to go over this with you. For ELA and mathematics with PAR, one thing that the state's always looking for, and then this is something that we discussed during Q-SAC, sorry. There we go. So this is something that's discussed during Q-SAC, but with PAR, ELA, and mathematics, one thing that they're looking for is that the overall percentage that students receive each year is progressing and going up each year. One of the reasons why the law supports every single year on Q-SAC was because the way in which federal regulations were written, it used the term New Jersey AS. The last time the New Jersey AS was administered was back in 2013, which is actually when I started my position in doing your two Q-SAC visits prior. So now that we have our Q-SAC visit this year, they're going to be looking at our current data to our math and language arts. One area that's always been a focus for us has been language arts. So we have Barb Epstein, who's our literacy consultant, she pushed into each area. When we look at the review data for the PAR over the past years that has been received, we've progressed slightly each year. That slight progression each year has earned us points. We had not been as happy with our progression in mathematics in our middle school grades when we looked there. So one thing we are doing is we're actually bringing a consultant in to provide that same support that this FSCAT has provided in our language arts areas, because we feel that that's an important area to provide that job of getting professional development for staff members. In addition to that, I provided you with our benchmark scores last, that we have been taking back in the spring, and as you know, I'll always present that to show fall to spring, where the PAR, where students are going, that's limited three times a year, in the fall, the winter, and the spring. When we go down to demographic groups, you'll see that our main demographic groups are female, male, economically disadvantaged, and students providing special education tuition. In order for it to be considered a demographic group, there's other demographic groups, based on race, based on ethnicity, and you need to have at least 10 students within a grade level for that to be considered a demographic group. So when we, if you turn the page and you look at our access scores, I'm sorry, the third page, so the second page, I showed you the final scores, the final scores on the bottom, because we have a total of 28 students in our ESL population that took the access test. However, when you look at the number of students in each grade level, it's less than 10. So we're unable to show the data on those students. We have it, but we're unable to show it because it's less than 10 students for our score report. So on the bottom, you can see the majority of our students fall within the developing category on the ESL assessment. And then with dynamic learning apps, we only had four students until that last year, so that's why we're unable to use that data to report other learning. Can I answer any questions specifically on the PAR data, or I can also answer questions on the access data? When you look at the ESL data, it's also important to remember that the students taken might have been receiving ESL services for two to three years, while some of the students might have just entered this country.
All right, so this is confusing to me.
Sure.
Because, and I know what you're talking about, it's not, I do this for a living. So you see at the top box, how you say like the average score, let's say for ELA 2018, ELA, excuse me, is 745.9?
Correct.
You might, like, so then I go down and say like, all right, let's look at third grade, average score 3.1. Can you explain the performance level?
Sure, I apologize. So I apologize, so the score 745.9 is a scale score that receives. Those scale scores that are received, if you look down on the bottom, either the ELA page or the math page, represent a performance level. So a scale score between 650 to 699 is a level one, which means it did not yet meet expectations. And then 700 to 724 is a level two, which is partially met expectations. 725 to 749 is approached expectations. 750 to 809 is met expectations. 810 to 850 is exceeded expectations. I also separated out special education. One thing that we've looked at this year is identifying special education needs, more specifically as far as where we saw things lacking, and identifying by looking at other schools, talking to different consultants, working with the child study team and the staff members in regards to what other curriculums we could utilize to support our students across all levels. Since that was one of our demographic groups that didn't show much growth, we would like to say.
All right, so here's my concern.
Sure.
You say that level four, which would be a 4.0, would be met expectation.
Correct.
So out of all of ELA and out of all of the math, in grades three, four, five, six, seven, no matter what you did, not one of whom averaged met expectations. True or false?
Well, we try to, we try to ask. So what we're doing though is as we look for growth each year, and as we look for more growth each year, and as we plan our professional development, and meeting students' needs, and planning interventions, and putting those things in place, we are looking for that growth.
Right, I don't.
In addition to that, yeah. So you are correct in what you said.
Right, but then you're like, but to just say something like, I don't have 17 either. I don't have 17 data broken down like this, or 16 data broken down like this, I have average scores here. So I was just making a statement being on this, so, I mean, I know what we're doing, we approve what we're doing, but I just wanted to say that that's a fact, that is true.
Correct.
That's my only question.
Any other questions?
So as far as correspondence in front of us, we have handy dandy folders, I don't know who I should thank for this, but whoever did this was decent, active, or workshop information, as well as, we have something about preschool information, we get help with that. So we can talk about that. And after recognition of citizens. At this time, we're open for public comments on agenda items only. If anyone in the public have any comments on agenda items only. All right. There you go. Also, I need to, well, we're ready for preschool expansion, this is what we said. Back in the summertime, we went to the informational workshop about preschool expansion with the state, we did one of the community initiatives that we, a campaign on. We grant application of certain benefits, I want to say August, right?
First week of September.
And it was totally, it wasn't, at first it wasn't competitive grant, and it was competitive grant, and then I found, we found out August 1st, that a lot of us got the grants, so we're happy, everybody in South Jersey. So on October 1st, we received the letter to the African Fund of Youth regarding preschool expansion, that's our opportunity, which is going to allow us to expand our current pre-K 4 program. Apparently, we had two half-day pre-K 4 programs. That allows us to expand, we're going to have now three full-day pre-K 4 programs. They'll all be out at the Bulb School, so beginning January 2nd, 2019. We've already started the planning process with staff, teachers, maintenance, administrators to get classrooms ready, they currently have our pre-K 4 classrooms, since they're still being around, they'll be ready to go in January. We are going to roll out, we talked about it in the meeting earlier, we're going to roll out some of this information to parents over the next several weeks. We are going to have information sessions with parents, and questions or answers for them. It's a lot, and it's, you know, what we're excited to have, it's so many of our kids, we're excited to have. So our pre-K 3 program will stay the way it is right now, and I stand out at this time, it's about pre-K 3, every full day. We will have three pre-K 4 groups coming January 2nd, we're excited. As far as hires, all this month, the light we received with state covers everything, expenses from the minor areas, the student loan requirements, professional adjustments, staff. We hope that we've already categorized, hired two teachers as well as instructing with the other classrooms, we'll have the people included in the group. We're also collaborating with Collinsburg and Waterford, who also received this class opportunity, to implement a creative curriculum to use the pre-K. So we'll be sharing expenses for that. We'll be doing trainings throughout the month of December for our new staff and current staff in that curriculum. So it's a good opportunity to not only have our staff and information, but also to see some other preschool, preschool information, and stuff like that. Again, just going to adjust some of our numbers. Once, we're mostly informed, parents, I understand you have pre-K 2, as well. Once we inform the parents of pre-K 4, that this is a full-day program, it's not an option. It currently, you know, I have a son that's going on a pre-K 4, half-day program, and I want to keep her in that, unfortunately, we understand that, but we just can't, basically with the grant, we can't just have. I think, I don't think we're going to have too many like that, that is a great opportunity to get free pre-K, no longer charging tuition, but like maybe, we find the ID, we handled checks yesterday for the board office, a little warm, right, take the money, let's go on, and not get the camera shot somewhere, just a better, and we also will bring a nurse in, and have some patients that are supporting the student, and bring a nurse in, again, we're starting to pay. Yes.
Little question, the grant funding, is it good for one year compared to the slide and the year?
I agree.
Because it just says for the one school district, for the one year.
Well, it's supposed to be over multiple years, it's not going to take away this next year. I was concerned with who might be in the office for a couple of years. Again, it's a letter, it's not a private, a private, a promise to do, but I'm hoping this is the best of all.
Okay, I think you have, so we're off our articles on it, and I'm still listening on 15th, first, like, size doesn't change pretty bad.
Yes, the size doesn't change, well, if all things work out, I believe we have 25 preschool, pre-K, for students starting in. Is it just some of the special education numbers? Currently, this is not going to be part of the call, we currently have eight, eight students, or seven? Seven students in special needs in pre-K program.
Eighteen, yes.
This is, this is dropping down to five.
But you're going to be.
But there's still a weight class, or? Yes. There's still a power to that.
And then we'll go out with the.
Yeah, we do have, currently, the waiting list of students, so we're quite focused, first we'll fill with that, and then, okay, more information will be going out over days and weeks. We're excited about that.
I think what I'm going to emphasize, even though it's going to create some, you know, everyone is tense about change in our condition, long picture, because this is huge for the gesture, like, you know, this is a very positive day. Everything, everyone who, like, is adding to.
Providing to questions, also having questions, questions, the teachers will be located, they have access to, access to the head and the question, that you have to have. Free to order numbers.
Yeah, I don't want to have to change.
No.
14.
No. At any time, we need 32, there's some that time, nothing there, which, also, it's going to be, again, question, or supervisor, we're already starting processes again.
And the other part.
Are three-year-olds eligible? Yes, that would be, yes, three and four-year-olds will apply.
No, no, yes, that's correct.
Yes.
And, yeah.
At this point, it doesn't apply the, sorry, it doesn't apply to the voucher system, due to practice, it's going to be separate process for preschool, and we can see if we qualify for that. So it will be a slide and scale that will do, just like we collect the data before, because it'll do a slide and scale to come out of patients, modify the needs.
And you're, are you, are you, are you paying these students?
So the AM, no, no, so the AM students are pre-K 3, they have access to the AM.
Okay.
The PM students without access to the PM, so that would be the three-year-olds.
So like, these are all like, you know, is. Are children eligible to teach one?
For pre-K 4, because it's all that has, that has, lunch is served in the orange and ass, and you serve vanishes out, this is the part of the pre.
So does anybody have anything? A couple of things, we have preschool expansion, a couple of things out tomorrow, we do have family night assembly, high 30, early 40 starts, the presentation with the six, also, a pre-K table, fair, some posters, family night.
With ice cream.
With ice cream.
So we got dinner and dessert, yes.
A couple of great things that I had, with respect to it, my second county actually did a great job, but I don't know if they did, they did. The Walk the School Day, I think was a big success, we're all really glad it comes over here. Being able to live this morning, walking through the town, school day, the kids, they were doing well, the school received prizes, some nice slant bracelets, which I thought were great, providing, council and sponsor that, they must like their children, but they're like.
Exactly.
Slant bracelets, it was good, yeah, exactly. But, keep that in mind, don't forget about getting Q-SAC, we do have a couple of trains coming up, we do have one more, right? We'll keep you updated, whether they're coming, we don't know whether they're coming yet as far as their visits, but I know when they do come, it looks like it's all for a board member, so we'll reach out to, if possible, if we have time, we'll share it with them, check that in the process. You have to do that in like 12 hours?
Absolutely not.
Now, we've got hours.
Okay, I mean.
Yes.
You can hear it.
Sorry, Q-SAC visit is kind of, they always like to talk, they talk to staff, so we'll also interview a couple of board members, plus.
All of your board members know your debt, it's harder.
I saw the Marine, I said, she's like, she said, she's like.
Get them out of the schedule?
Yeah, I said, I'll do it, but I was just, so, it was, yeah, exactly. And that's all I have, I know I, I was thinking about, and then, and knock this out, I can have a whole schedule, pre-pot, once that does, we're already using hand and hand power to set up on that, and asking, trying to do this, this yearly thing, we can, I'm done with the payroll. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Top 20.
This is outside, we have audits fully completed, we shut the preliminary audit in our hands in November, I'm being told that they will be out at the December Board of Education meeting to do their presentation. The audit went well, there was nothing that they identified for corrective action at this time, and we're just waiting to see when those vital numbers come out ads. Right now, preparing for Q-SAC, this past week, I worked a lot with Mr. Heinz in terms of doing facility checklist of each building, we will be having walkthroughs done of the buildings, so the county business administrator will be coming out with that and walking the buildings with Mr. Heinz and myself to ensure the fact that we are compliant with everything. So notice will be going out to staff members to ensure the fact that everything is in place where it is today. Mr. Rockwood is currently working on moving, since we have the voucher system, we've had an increase of students who are participating, so we're moving away, where parents who show up and drop their kids off and work pick them up, have to call from a specific phone number to qualify, we now have the swipe machines, as soon as we got the swipe machine, we were told we had to return them to the company, the company is still longer using them, and we just, so it's been a process, to say the least. So hopefully, those will be up and running within the next week, and then we have designated the hard lines, the plug, the phone lines, the plug and tip, since we were using cell phone numbers. phone numbers previously. Um, as far as curriculum is concerned, um, observations are up and running, we had our October fifth PD day, and, um, both for B I and curriculum, county curriculum meetings have been taking place. In addition, we have schoolwork coming up, everyone will see it there on our folder, um, reimbursements, information, um, events, I highlighted for some of you activities, um, that would be beneficial, and the only other thing going on would be negotiations, with the negotiations being trying to get everything up and running, and we started with that, we started pulling that information and, um, scattered it with the chair with the R E I, for them to confirm and prove, get the ball.
What? Yes, thank you. Any questions about the agenda? Cancelled reports, nurses' reports, building and grounds, special education reports are attached, anybody have any questions there?
Uh, under P T A, they noted we're joining teams, uh, our book fair night is tomorrow, so if you're coming out, um, we'll have lots of, um, books and more. I would like to actually publicly thank Mrs. Yezzi and Mr. Peely and Mr. I G G for always helping us and sending them blast out, because they really do help us, and so we're, we're forever grateful, so we appreciate your support, you know, with social media, all this seems to be, and text messages, that seems to be how people are, um, aware of things these days, and I figured out today why I get two, because I get one as a member of the parents' account, so...
I do too.
Yeah, there you go, you get two as well, okay.
Um, the policy public, we speak upon that, um, we just, we met briefly. No, we met briefly, we'll, um, send an update out, there's a lot of things going on, we're obviously very excited about the preschool expansion as well, so we want to make sure that we're, um, publicly, you know, letting our community know, it's so important to have our students here, the younger, the better, um, so we're going to meet again, because we didn't even get to finish our agenda, so we'll meet again, uh, before the November meeting, but we'll update you, um, as well. Can you tell the answer to this?
Yes, um, I was at that meeting, and really, there's no news to report, uh, the biggest initiative, unless they're still working on, and, uh, the superintendent says probably, we're probably going to another year, the County Educational Services Commission would like to offer, uh, mental health services to school districts throughout the county, they're working now, not only with virtue of the hospital, uh, the doctors there, but also Jefferson in spirit, I believe it is, uh, and with the Gatties and everything else, it's just going to be a long process, but that's the hope that we'll have, that will be able to offer to school districts, uh, that service. With, uh, the zoning plan board meeting, uh, just a few things, it was, uh, the parents approved, putting up a fence, one property or subset approved, another one was a shed approved, the law need fan, the biggest, the biggest topic to discuss at the zoning board meeting was P T A C N G is operating a substation, which is very, I mean, shame, but in, at the party, at the woods, that is the only section along the nation that has no sidewalks, uh, our mayor, and, uh, I'm not sure if he's, we, but, but himself, I would imagine he's probably at, uh, anywhere to counsel people going, uh, if he's got to be scheduled, P T A C N G, he wants to have the footed sidewalks along that section, but they're in the army. Uh, last thing that I had to report, based on the discussion, the local meeting, is the redevelopment plan that they've been looking at for quite some time, they're hoping that, uh, the town meeting, or people, own properties on the bike in the area that would be impacted, they'll have that meeting in December, hopefully, have it, um, in December. Uh, the only other thing that I had to report was, uh, I attended a workshop, a week and a half ago, uh, called my curiosity, uh, her name is Kathy, Dr. Kathy Greber, she's a trained, uh, psychologist, she has written seven, eight books, and four, five, and then the Hilton New York, best selling list, and we're engaged for a series of years, and I went to that workshop, and I gave everyone here, and I shared the copy, just the highlights that she pointed out, uh, she's a remarkable woman, who has fought cancer twice, from vegan, and she is currently working with some of the highest ranking generals, others in, with the Navy SEALs, uh, Army, Delta, which are the Rangers, uh, and they're focusing on why we have twenty-two service medical women who need suicide each month, what can they do to help them readjust back in society after they have been fighting, uh, in the war, in the war? I can tell you as a father of a gentleman who was in the army eighteen years, and worked with, and directed captain, that my son goes to these, to colleges. It's difficult when you're in a war, and you have to fill to live, and then come back to normal society and try to live normal life, so she's doing remarkable work, med, medically , that's remarkable, so, uh, it was initially a workshop, and I thought some of the information could be shared, or, shared more.
I think, yes.
Yes.
Um, I noticed, oh, I, yes, which was an activation, um, new?
No.
Well, it wasn't at the end of the winter, we didn't have...
Oh, you're twice a year.
Oh, so not every month, okay, that's why.
Just getting your kids on the, by saying, to give the rest.
Um, the Jersey School Board especially, do you have anything there to give this meeting?
Um, just briefly, just, um, we're threatening everyone to go to the confessions, um, to the classroom for the day, there's so many things to choose from, and we have mandated classes that we have to attend to receive our accreditation, um, uh, and the only other thing was, the paper went around to sign up for the next, um, like, the next, um, meetings, county meetings, um, last county meeting that we had, yes, we had a forum of, um, tour attendants and principals and board members from other counties that, which we lost to county, that had lost money in their funding, what they had done to make up for the lost income that they had. Um, currently, I believe, I, Washington County High School, and it was also the last for our school district, they said that they had to increase their class sizes, this is a new high school, there were twenty-five, thirty-five students in the classroom, they had to take out all of your extra electives, like, for instance, um, you know, economics, photography, all the special things that you want your kid to do after school, the same age, they had to take those programs out, because they were typical study halls, because they just haven't the funds to hire the teachers to do extra classes, so, um, we learned amazing insight as to, you know, what happened, we had to lose, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and I think we're very fortunate, smartly, that did not lose any money, we were able to, um, use the money we had wisely, and, um, incorporate, you know, for our students the best that we can, and, um, with the, uh, program that we had, have had to fight.
And they are being represented as well.
Thank you.
Give it a corner, and you see, there's, uh, nice, thank you. Any other questions for, any options for the good of the order, if not, we'll move into the agenda. So the new passes, operating, transportation, and the admission to provide them from response through five.
Second.
Motion be my Patty.
All second.
Second by Dennis. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Derek.
Yes.
Ms. Bebe.
Yes.
Ms. Shwakan.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Fandarella.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes. Under personnel, I need admission to provide them from response through five.
Oh, you're pushing the third one, first question.
Motion be my Patty.
All second.
Second by Dennis. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Derek.
Yes.
Ms. Bebe.
Yes.
Ms. Shwakan.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Fandarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sam.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes. Motion passes. Under findings, I need admission to provide them, members, one, through...
Fourteen, I'll make that motion.
Barb, you seconded that?
I'm just...
Seconded by Maria. Seconded by Barbie.
That would include preschool, that's what Billy decided.
Any questions there? Roll call.
Ms. Derek.
Yes.
Ms. Bebe.
Yes.
Ms. Shwakan.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Shwakan.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Fandarella.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
As a parent and as a, as a cause school board member, I just want to say, thank you, Dr. Carrick, making, you know, that grant application in the mail, a time that we had, and a success, you know, just saying.
You know, waiting for that, they said, early October, we're going to let us know, right?
And we are.
Eight oh one, October first, and he's calling, we can call state, call this person, you know, like...
He's calling. Hold on, buddy, you still don't remember that?
I'm going to call him.
You know, my, my, Samantha, you know what, can we follow up on the, the question about the grant, like, is it only a one-year thing?
Of course we will.
No, but I think that just, anybody watching this, or anyone here could question, like, if we're going to rewind again this year, and what everyone needs to remember is, those students that become part of our general population, and we will get per student aid, that we do for every student who's currently enrolled, so I just, that is like, I, I just feel like, you know, it's not something that, we're not going to take away the preschool that we put in place, I guess. I know, well, that's what I, you know, wait, we need to, we...
Yeah, we'll touch, we'll touch on it again, that's for sure. Um, under curriculum, I need to address just for number one, please.
I make the motion.
Motion be my Maria.
Okay.
Second by Patty, roll call.
Ms. Derek.
Yes.
Ms. Bebe.
Yes.
Ms. Shwakan.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Shwakan.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Fandarella.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes. Policy and public relations, approval for number, motion for number one and two.
I'll make a motion.
Seconded by Dan, seconded by Maria, any questions there?
Uh, I just asked my fellow board members, because this is to have all of us, take a close look at these policy provisions I reported, and say critical, and especially the history, to hire someone with their past complaint of history, uh, these are important policies, so if you get a chance, I'd like to review them, thank you.
Roll call.
Ms. Derek.
Yes.
Ms. Bebe.
Yes.
Ms. Shwakan.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Shwakan.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Fandarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sam.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes. Motion passes. At this time, we're now looking for, uh, public comments. Ellen.
Hello.
Ellen, Ellen, one sixty-one, four, uh, and then, I mean, what is Q S A? What is it?
You're monitored by the state.
What?
You're monitored, monitored by the state every, well, full Q S A reviews every three years.
Every three years, what is it, like, middle states, that kind of thing? Yeah, middle states comes in.
Yeah.
Like, basically.
Education, yeah.
Oh, so it's, it's that kind of thing, so they come in and they look at everything, like, those things.
Yeah, fiscal, curriculum, you know, personnel, a whole laundry.
How much was the grant that we got for the expansion? What was that, Q S A?
Five hundred, five hundred, five hundred seventy thousand, five hundred fifty-five dollars.
And that's going to go for ever? Will always have that money given to us? Of course, it's just a one-time thing, and then when it's done, they're done.
It'll become a part of our state aid, but it'll fall under the grant category, so each year, as we submit our numbers for how many collections we add, that money will then be filtered in, and we'll receive state aid funding from the state for preschool. When you look at other school districts that have received the preschool expansion funding, we will, this isn't the first time they've done this, so if you look around, it started with that, and then, uh, more recently, you have, like, I've done our school district who did the expansion, there's different types of grants, some are for building facilities, others are strictly expansion, expansion means they're not giving you money for full projects, they're giving you money simply to build your program, which means...
So we're building our program?
We're building our program because the facility building wasn't an option that they needed.
All right, so the five hundred seventy will come to us in trips and drives?
For this school year.
In trips and drives.
For our stadium. No, so it's broken us between our stadium payments, so we receive stadium payments every single month.
And that money will be?
Through, through June thirty, twenty nineteen.
So we get a stadium payment every month, so this, that five seventy will come out amongst whatever we made.
So out of the twelve months, we'll get?
Prorated for whatever we made.
Prorated for the...
Yes, that'll cover any materials, staffing, resources, and minor...
All right, so for twelve months, we get five hundred and seventy of that, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's great. What happens at the end of the twelve months?
The grant continues, it's an extension grant, so over the course of the next five years, they want to expand our program to the point where we can build it, just to take possibility, all of the students that are there, and that way, we're providing for preschool for all of our pre-k for students.
I, I just wanted that clear, because it wasn't clear, like, that's, that'd work out. Um, what is this mental health program, again, where they're thinking about giving us, is that counseling, or is going to be a special person coming in?
That's who the county, county, county services commission, what they want to do, they would provide services to schools, such as psychologists, psychiatrists, to the hospitals, if you identify a child that's considering suicide.
So they go to the hospital?
A child that's trying to break the habit of using drugs, or whatever, depression.
So they go to the hospital, or to the care facility, and then, and then...
That's probably going to be part of it, but it's in the early stages, this won't be initiated until at least next school year at best.
Okay. And, one more thing, at the latest focus, Pali Casio, for, um, a, sort of like a GoFundMe for technology, and it was, my Mrs. Mitchell of the second grade, I think you might know about this, she wanted a computer card, and she was able to get it, and, uh, I think Pali Casio's question was, why did she reach out through social media when they have so many organizations in town that would have helped her out? I mean, the Women's Club, I know the seniors come down, and she didn't reach out to the community, and I was wondering why she thought that maybe we wouldn't want to help her. I'm education chairman now, for the Women's Club, this would be wonderful for like a program, to have been appointed.
So is there funding that the Women's Club or that the council, they wanted to do?
Yes.
Because other organizations have allowed teachers to write grants in the past, and then they fulfill, like, you know, smaller grants that way.
I thought, I thought if I reached out to them tomorrow, next day, and let them make some meetings, and make some programming, and then...
Yeah, oh my God, that would be wonderful, I mean, they give scholarships, but we want to be more, and when we saw this, and we weren't invited, I, I was disappointed.
Well, I don't think that it was that you were lying, like, it's just something that, like, us, us educators, I'm speaking as a teacher now, is what we do, because that platform, that social media platform reaches millions of people, not just the community around me, and sometimes we feel as though, like, we're always asking for stuff, we're always asking for scholarships, and donations, and P T A, and then, so, when we do the, when we, when we go out, like, the donors choose, which I believe it was, we can, we can access many, 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 many more donors than we have here at heart, so there's no need to feel offended, so would you please go back and let this pass you know the same thing, there's no need to be offended, it's just that, we were trying to put this down in a wider range to get that funding quicker, it's not that we were forgetting anyone, or the teachers were forgetting anyone, it's just that...
You can, you'll get to it.
So we'll get our list together, when we, be ready.
Just try and take these, you know, something about, they take the president, so you know, just get a list together.
I, I, I know, but we're, we're, what you're, we're trying to say is, like, that donors choose goes out to people all over the world, so that's what it is, so, you know, sometimes we don't want to always, you know, be people, the same people, over and over, and over, and over.
I know, I know, so, I don't know.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Comments?
Mrs. Calvin, do you want to mention the Halloween party since I don't have...
Oh, yes, the thirty-first, from six to eight, at the Field House, it's going to be
Oh, yes, the thirty-first, from six to eight, at the Field House, it's going to be a Halloween party, we make sure everybody comes in costume, and, um, of course, everything is free, they have the pizza, and all kinds of soda, and drinks, and all kinds of good food, so make sure everybody comes down on the thirty-first, sixteenth.
Thank you. Would you like me to, uh, do a last for that, a message after the meeting, or pass a message or email, or something?
Oh, yeah, that would be great.
When you say the Field House, you mean the other one, Jim?
No.
The Field House, the Wawa, or, it's the bar.
It's the bar.
Okay, got you. All right, so there is no need for executive session this evening, our next regular scheduled board meeting is November twentieth, and that will be at Downey School, very exciting. Any other questions, comments, concerns? No, I need a motion to.
I need a motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye. Aye, tap, means adjourn.